Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of April 11th, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Fickson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Harrison?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight, and I think I feel better this night as saying that spring is here. People out on the tennis courts. It's a nice night, so hopefully we're there. So first, we have public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentation. First, I'd like to call Carolyn Kraus up from Oakland County, has a brief presentation, and then if anybody, council member, has any questions. So welcome from our representative from the county. And also a Rochester Hills resident.
Okay, we're sorry.
But you're thinking of moving to Rochester.
Well, I'm very loyal to the Hills. I always tell Brian he's my favorite mayor.
You should see what I say about Brian sometimes.
So I brought today an update from Oakland County, and I brought copies of our strategic framework, one pager, and our goals. But in the short time that I was asked to come join you at the meeting, I learned that there's other priorities to our conversation. So I did bring some updates regarding county support of Fire and Ice Winter Festival and the Brooksy Way. And I can give you some notes on that, or if you want to start with questions, I can try to answer some questions.
Why don't you give us an update on those two, and then if anybody has questions.
Okay, so I did speak to Dave Vanderveen on Friday, and I spoke to our chief deputy, Hillary Chambers. And Dave is still on staff, even though he's officially retired, and he's still on the Parks Commission. He's part-time. He retired from his full-time position. And he is a commissioner for Parks and Rec, and they are the primary sponsors or supporters of Fire and Ice. And he kind of chuckled when I told him there was some concern as Fire and Ice going away from the county. And he said, "No, it's not." And he said that for the past years, the county hasn't been there, but it's strictly been restrictions placed by the Health Division in the pandemic. So one of the things that he mentioned mainly was that we would supply that large tent with warming stations, and the Health Division did not allow the gathering of that many people in the tent, and so they nixed the idea. And the Health Division has that authority. And any of the other support, maybe through sponsorships or... So the Parks Department are still your partners on Fire and Ice with the tent, and Kristi and I were mentioning before the meeting, if there's support for the toboggan run or, you know, the festivities, the Parks Department is still a willing partner. And I think that your contact would still primarily be Dave Vanderveen, and he still has Dave Coulter support to be engaged in Fire and Ice in Rochester. And in terms of sponsorships or that kind of thing, that would be separate from the government. I work for the government, so I would suggest you talk to Dave about any opportunities that maybe he pursued for you in the past. Uh, let's see. And he did mention that, as I know you know as well, Dave Coulter did attend the event in 2019. As far as Brooksy Way goes, Dave Coulter and Hillary Chambers met recently with Doug Kurtzner and board members George Miller and Greg Judas. And they are currently, I mean Hillary is making calls currently right now to explore the needed sponsorships for that event. And the county's support of that, again, is through in-kind. And the 501(c)(3) that operates Brooksy is completely separate from Oakland County. The support is still there. It's two... She told me she's seeking $250,000 in sponsorships, and, I mean, she's making calls. So if it's there, if... I don't know if the council is making calls. I'm not sure if what the organizers of the race are working on, but she's working on that, and you have Dave Coulter's support on that as well. And as far as the name of the event, Hillary was under the impression that the board was discussing the name and how that will be carried into the future. That has not... We have no impact on that, and that wasn't at all a priority conversation for us. So I think that, you know, if we can drum up the sponsorships, if the support, the financial support that is necessary is there, they'll get it for us. I mean, Oakland University, I think, was approached with taking it over, and they declined. So I think it's just a matter of shoring up the resources, the financial resources. But I can assure you that she's actively working on it, as is Dave Coulter, so I think that's good news. I bring good news from the county.
That sounds awfully good. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Albrecht?
Thanks, Carolyn, for coming. I appreciate you addressing the two items that we talked about at the last meeting. Couple of questions, follow-up questions. Fire and Ice also has a big fireworks display that's been done as long as I can remember. Last year, we, through our own sponsorships in the city, had shorter fireworks display, but we still did. Our businesses, thank you, stepped up and contributed enough money so we could do it two nights in a row. Who paid for the fire? Did the county provide the fireworks in prior years?
No, those were always... The county, it would have been a charitable sponsorship, I believe. Now, there could be... I've gotten some indication that there could be some county money put to Brooksy, but my understanding is that the fireworks were sponsored.
Kristi, do you have any update on, or can you shed some light on it?
Sorry, the mayor waved me off. No, that's totally fine. So within the committee, Dave Vanderveen actually spearheaded getting sponsors for that. In the past, it was our magazine and Suave Enterprises. Then over time, it kind of switched out to Suave Enterprises and, I believe, it was Oakland County Federal Credit Union. So that's something that we're happy to work with Dave on. Again, like Councilmember Albrecht mentioned, we, through our social media, were able to get sponsors this past year. It may end up being a hybrid, I don't know, so we need to talk to Dave and see where that's at. But typically, that was not something that came out of the DDA's budget. That was something that the county was able to secure sponsorships on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. Now, moving to the Brooksy Way, again, you mentioned 250,000 in sponsorships, going back to when it's been run before. Has it always been based on sponsorships of different...
Well, so the Brooksy is run by an independent body of organizers. So I actually don't know the answer to that. I mean, they've always had sponsorships. And if the county, I guess theoretically, was perhaps the sponsor, but I mean, I was just reading some news articles today to try to get some more background on it. And, I mean, it's been clearly reported that it's separate. It's not... It's never... The county has never owned that event. Your former county executive dreamt it up, right? And he was probably really persuasive in getting sponsors for it, for something that he wanted to do. But the county, Oakland County, Michigan, doesn't put that event on, nor did we ever.
Does the county donate in-kind, meaning the sheriff? You know, we have our police department, but the rest of the communities have...
I would imagine, yeah, or like Parks, if they brought the band shell.
Can I finish my question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was part of that sponsorship that the county would say, "Here, we will provide X number of hours of sheriffs to close off streets and the barriers and all those kinds of things," so that there was no real cost because the county was absorbing it? Or was that all done? Did our sponsors then have to pay the county or the sheriff's department to provide that service?
My understanding is that the county contribution to the Brooksy Way was through in-kind donations.
So the sheriff's departments and the road closures?
I don't know exactly what they were, but it was in-kind. I can imagine that...
Well, I think the... Excuse me, I think the county was the Hills of, you know...
Well, that's the sheriff's department.
Right, yeah. But it wasn't through the county, it was through Rochester Hills, I think.
Right. So, or if there's anything from Parks and Rec or staff, that could be considered, if volunteers working at it, I think those can all be considered in-kind. But they did not... It wasn't a line item in our budget.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Carolyn. We appreciate it. Thank you for clearing up our questions around the Brooksy Way and Fire and Ice. We're excited to... I think I'm understanding they'll both be coming back to our community, so that's reassuring to us, and I appreciate that. I am wondering if you'd give us an update from the State of the County address, just briefly?
Of course, thank you. So, I feel like I should clarify, because I think we take minutes at these types of things. The county doesn't decide if the events are coming back or not. We don't own the events. We are supporting the effort, for sure, and you have reassurance of our support. And Dave Vanderveen is still your lead on Fire and Ice, and Hillary Chambers, our chief deputy county executive, is working on the homework she was given when she met with the race organizers, the chief of staff, or whatever Doug's title is, and two of the board members. So you have my word that she's working on trying to identify sponsors.
Okay, thank you.
And the Brooksy Way is run by the...
Brooksy.
Yeah, by the Brooksy family.
(inaudible).
The 501(c)(3) of the Brooksy family, in honor of his son, so...
Well, it was named for his son. The race was in the works, actually, before his son was killed. So I don't know who formed the 501, but it is a separate... It's its own entity, and the county supports as able. And your county executive is working on securing sponsorships that are needed for it.
Further questions? Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for that good news, and thank you for the support...
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry.
...that the county councilmember Harrison?
I just asked for that update from the State of the County.
So nice. I'll take you up on it, Amanda. Thank you. Just a quick look back on some success and support. I know that one of the questions was, "How can Rochester continue to work with the county?" And I would suggest that we keep in touch with Dave Vanderveen. I'm a great connection to your county. If there's a question I can't answer, I promise to find out who can, and I work with your administration. So if there's ever any way I can be of service, please keep in touch. And we can... I always say, "We don't know what we can do if we don't at least have the conversation." So, you know, that's an open door there. The county, as we were thinking about... I was thinking about this after I got a question about our State of the County address. There are 62 municipalities in Oakland County, and there's 1.25 million people in Oakland County. So we are a large and diverse entity. A quick look back, CAREZAC, the federal legislation that helped us all get through COVID, or at least attempted to. The city of Rochester was awarded nearly $365,000. That was based on population. OPC, for instance, received just under $58,000. I believe there was a library grant, and then there was $2.3 million awarded to Rochester entities, food service, manufacturing, personal services, retail, entertainment, and recreation. And that money was through recovery grants and stabilization, PPE, the restaurant recovery, and reopening grants. At the State of the County, I feel our executive laid out for us his strategic framework that he's developed with his team. And I mentioned, I brought our little handouts here. It includes seven strategic goals with specific KPIs and a commitment to keep these progress on our key performance indicators posted on our webpage. We have a dashboard showing our progress in the areas that we have heard from residents are important. Those include thriving and inclusive economy, healthy residents, a skilled and educated workforce, livable neighborhoods, environmental sustainability, public safety and criminal justice, and then organizational excellence. More of an internal goal. And then just a couple initiatives that have direct impact on Rochester residents. A new program that is launched is our Business Forward Program. We've hired nine consultants who are working in previously underserved communities throughout Oakland County to provide resources, expertise, consulting, and helping to ensure that small businesses succeed. And we're looking to expand the initiative and to include more communities. Specifically, we've targeted Rochester, Troy, Lake Orion. And admittedly, the focus of this beginning is in communities that are underserved, and it does look like, I've even noticed, because the region I work in for the county is mainly north of M59, and we don't have anyone stationed there. So the unique thing of this program is that these people are working within their communities. But there is a full-time person on staff at our building in Waterford who's taking inquiries or calls from people outside of these communities that we've started in. And there is a plan to expand. Our upcoming revolving loan fund to help people get the startup funding they need to build and grow their business will be expanding as well. We find this is especially helpful for minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses that might not have access to traditional funding sources, and this is an expanded resource. We do have the seed small business loan program available for startup and business expansion equipment, supplies, and it does include working capital. And I brought some flyers on that program, and it's on our webpage as well. We're super proud of the success of our recent Project Diamond program that provided 250 3D printers to businesses across Oakland County, such as Air and Liquid Systems in Roiloke... Excuse me, Rochester Hills. Got the R-O. And the executive did call that company out in our State of the County, noting that the 3D printer allows this company to make a part that was $98 for them to make, is now $2.45 with the 3D printer. And I saw that the Rochester Chamber featured another initiative, thanks to this Project Diamond program. One of the companies in the Rochester Hills Chamber is making tourniquets for Ukraine, the effort in Ukraine. I printed it out. I have to read it again. But it's just an incredible opportunity that these 3D printers have afforded, and they've even formed a consortium. So if a request comes in that one of the companies can't handle, they can work together to fulfill the order. They're tapping into this network of companies that got the printers to see who else could have capacity. And so right now, there's a waitlist for the 3D printers, but if there's a business that's interested in that, I would suggest we get in touch, and Dom Holmes on our team will get them onto the waiting list and see what we can make available. I'm really proud that the county has leaned into their commitment to improving mental health services. We have awarded $7.9 million in grants to 41 nonprofit agencies in support of mental health services and programs. There was also recently a $500,000 grant approved to help families impacted by the Oxford School shooting, pay for insurance copays, deductibles, and costs of mental health care. And additionally, $2 million in ARP money to help hospitals evaluate people in crisis so they get the treatment they need in a more appropriate setting than a hospital emergency room. And then two more million in funding for mental health and well-being school partnership program to work directly with school professionals to increase health services, mental health services in our schools. We have a home repairs program that's expanding in the county to fund home repairs for low and moderate income homeowners. The goal is that we keep our homes in good shape and people can remain in their homes. Expanded healthcare services for low-income residents, and for the past two years, the county has been providing COVID testing and since December, vaccines to more than 920,000 residents. And we've held community clinics right here in Rochester, and we're very grateful for your partnership, and we really enjoy being in the firehouse. It's a great community partner for us. We have a new program coming, Oakland 80, career counseling, job training, wraparound services. We are deploying career and education navigators throughout the county, and they can help connect individuals and businesses into programs providing apprenticeship, scholarships, and we can help people with everything from books and tools to childcare and transportation. So this is just a highlight of some of our programming, and really, I encourage you. I've been on staff at the county for a year, and for as much as we don't do, like, I think, you know, it's... Dave Coulter always jokes when he came into office as county commissioner, "What does the county do?" We ask people all the time, "What do you think the county does?" They're like, you know, taxes, I guess. So we have a treasurer, we have circuit court, we have an animal shelter, we have a sheriff, we have a clerk, and we have a wonderful Health Division. We partner with the Oakland County Schools. So it's pretty special what the county can do, and I would just say that, you know, we're here. And like I said, there's 62 municipalities in the county, but I represent our executive, and whenever I can be of service, or if we need to get the big guy down here, we can do that, and we are partners, and we're here to support the City of Rochester.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you for that update. Other question for you is, do you have any update? I heard there's a rumor that the county is getting rid of the law library and turning that into a lounge.
Well, I don't think... I don't... I have not heard that it's being turned into a lounge. When I started, I did receive phone calls, and they were taking appointment only, and it was a COVID thing. But now that the court is back open, I don't know. I could definitely follow up with you on the status, though.
Okay.
And that's a circuit court operation, but I could inquire.
All right, that would be awesome. And then the next thing, because I do know that RTA is on the agenda as well with the county, so if we could get an update on that maybe in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Carolyn, thanks for the update. I was also at the State of the County, and all the things you mentioned were well articulated by Mr. Coulter at that event. I just, when you were talking about the serving the small businesses and everything else, and I know you started in some of the underserved areas, they were... I think we saw everybody there on the slideshow and what areas they represented. One of the things I would just suggest, as you move north or into Lake Orion...
And west, yeah.
...community, Rochester, and I think you said Troy. We have a great Rochester Regional Chamber, and Maggie Bobbitts would be a great resource. And I know in talking to her last week, she'd like to have more involvement with the colony in terms of, you know, any kinds of programs or events that could benefit our small businesses and all the people we serve. And it's not just... While there are offices in Rochester, we have people from many of the surrounding communities, so I think that might be a good connection for the county. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And one other thing, I really think that the counties, when they stepped up and provided all the PPE to the city here, was phenomenal, so very much appreciated. I know from all the businesses and everyone that it was here for.
Thank you. We still have more. If you would need any, give us a call. I have hospital gowns if you'd like those. No, Nancy's like, "No, thank you."
Anything further? Thank you for coming. And, you know, think about that "who's your favorite mayor" thing.
I'll reconsider.
In the future, okay.
But it seemed too opportunistic if I changed my... Okay, I'll say.
Yeah, there you go. We're okay with opportunism at certain times. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to call on Pat Keane. Come on up, Pat. Welcome. Blaine, you're gonna help with the slides? Thank you.
Yes, he is. To begin with, at the last meeting, in the meeting before, in watching it, because I couldn't make that meeting, there was a lot of misinformation and misconceptions. I'm not going to address those on a point-by-point basis tonight at all. What I'm going to start out with is to show you kind of what it's like when lights are on your property. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be a two-story house. It can be a single-story house, and the effect is the same between someone not having property rights because of overlighting, light pollution, stray lighting, and non-directed lighting, and someone who has their property right for the same amount of taxation. So that really kind of illustrates it. We're gonna move on kind of rapidly, because I'm gonna try to hold this. Next, we have the Kelvin color temperature chart. What currently, what we're looking at around our property right now, coming through our house, is somewhere between the 7,000 and the 10,000 range, which is the two on the far right. As we know, or you may not know, on the Kelvin temperature range, a 60-watt bulb is 9,500 Kelvins. It's also some of the most damaging to the eyes, because what you're telling yourself is you're looking at a bulb. The most comparative chart is that a 60-watt bulb at 9,500, you shouldn't have a bulb and the glare to look at. Next is what it's doing to the eyes, because when we get into this color chart, anywhere from 4,000 on or even 2,700 on, your vision and your eyes cannot adjust. You have glare, certainly a lot of light trespass, contributing mightily to the sky glow, which we have over Rochester right now, because most of us, you've got light coming in your house anyway from what we call pollution. It's called sky glow. It's refractory. So right now, many cities have gotten away because you cannot measure light. We're looking right now at candellas, Kelvins, looks, lumens, candellas, wattage, and candle foot power. It almost makes it impossible, because a lot of that terminology has not kept up at all with the type of bulbs used, because we have hot bulbs, we have cold bulbs, we have incandescence, candescence, LEDs, and CFLs. So there's the problem right there. That's why cities have gone to shield and residential end of it, and the only lights they regulate are public spaces, highways, roadways, and what would be required from, as we say, myosha or OSHA, as far as manufacturing goes and industrial, et cetera, and commercial and multi-housing. Okay, next, what I've got right now, what I'm looking at in my house, is very bad. If you can imagine a carriage light, that's what I have. They're not... You can't even see where the light is shielded enough or angled. The best solution is, again, a downward to the area it's going to be used. It will still light property, it will still light housing, it still lights windows, but it's confined to that property, and that's probably the best thing to do, because we're not hurting the environment, and we're not hurting people, and you're not interfering with the circadian rhythm, melatonin, birds, insects. Everything suffers when you're overlighting and turning the night in today, including animals. I get reports now, gosh forbid, if a little raccoon is getting used to, or a possum, to lights 24/7, and they're out in the afternoon, oh my gosh, they're rabid. They're not. We're turning them so they don't have a night anymore. So very bad should not happen, especially in a residential area. Our lots are pocket-sized. Okay, this is an example of three lights right through my entire house. Now, one would think, you can see the white light, and you can see the other two lights, but you don't see any definition of what they're in. And I'm gonna tell you right now, those three lights have opaque coverings. They are that bright, and they go not only to that property, across the street, across my easement, across the sidewalk in front of my house, and they go entirely through my entire house and out, my back windows into my backyard. This is in my backyard, this was a before picture of a backyard light that used to be on all the time. That was, that backyard light before was not a problem, and it illuminated that entire backyard beyond my fence without a problem, and you could easily see it on Castell, you could see it from my upstairs window. The whole lot was illuminated. This is what it got replaced with. Okay? That's through my whole house from the south side, and it comes all the way out to my front door. That's not good. And that's where I spent over $1,000 for shades that were blackout, because I'm in my kitchen cooking. When I'm in my dining room, living room, or you're going into the hall, it's a small house, that light is blinding, and it's like, oh, so you don't want it. It's uncomfortable. We've got a pointer now. We're gonna show you something. Okay, I wanna show you a little something right here. Do I have it right? Okay. See this li... Excuse me, I'm so sorry. No glasses on right now. Okay, you see this little tiny box right here?
Yes.
Okay, that is the white light I just showed you. Okay, that is the white light I just showed you. So look how tiny that is. Okay, this, okay, that's, that was the back, the front that's coming through my whole house, and my porch, and it renders the porch unusable. This is just another example of another garage light that's into my bedrooms. You can see my drapes in my window, and we're got, to get heavier coverings for this light and the lights across the street. Now, we wrapped, okay. Again, we're going to the covering, and I will tell you, the standard, when I hear the light doesn't trespass, if Mr. Stage were to put his hand on that white screen right now, or just walk in front of it, see that shadow? That's the shadow the light across the street causes on my white built-in bookcases, and my shades in my kitchen when they're down, which is the southernmost area. This isn't any quan, inequity for the taxation. It's also not a standard, I don't think, that we want people to live to by a pick-and-choose in Rochester. Lights, it was my understanding, are to be directed away from a bedroom. It's right through my bedrooms. You're not supposed to have the glare, we have a lot of glare. I have called a real estate agent, did come out, and it devalues my house because of the porch and the way it looks, and if I were to sell my house and someone comes at night, I would be hard to find someone that wants a, like a spotlight effect through your whole house. I also called my homeowner's insurance. Homeowner's insurance, yes, it puts you at risk. Why? Glare. You can't adjust your eyes enough, and you've got glare in your house, we live with it. Someone said, you shouldn't have to spend money, everybody has the right to the peace and quality and enjoyment of their, of their home. I've spent over $1,000, and I've got thousands more to go, but that does not give me the use of my porch, or the use of enjoying my property, for something that originates artificially across a street, ends in my one-bedroom closet, and there's no per, point or purpose to it. So, it has to be something, the best solution is you shield your residential. Most cities have gone to that, and all cities, a lot of cities, I shouldn't say all, many cities are right now, are reviewing their archaic language. Best scenario, they need to be shielded, that's it. I have had no use of my property, my property tax has gone up, it's every evening, right on through the entire night. When I leave for work, many times, those lights are still on. I come home, they're on. I have had people leave my house because they are uncomfortable, unless we shutter everything up. If I shutter everything up, and it's still right now through my drapes, why? We might as well build houses that are just boxes then. But it puts me at risk, because I really can't have the visibility I need for my safety and security on my property. I should be able to control residential light to my property and on my property, and not have someone else dictate how it's going to be. Not everybody has that. And unfortunately, with these houses on pocket-sized lots and small lots, you don't need that type of lighting, but we have to be more cognizant of how you light. And I guess what I'm gonna ask for is, the lights are shielded, it's certainly a nuisance, but I would like my property rights for my taxation, which is the same base everybody pays, restored to me. I don't think anybody should light through somebody's structure, I'm sorry. The interior, that is mine, and the shadows are all through my house, more than moonlight, more than anything, is what you saw. And I would like definitely shielding on these lights, but remove them from my property, please. And I don't want to have to, I, I will tell you, to be here tonight, I'm embarrassed. And I feel like I have groveled, and begged, and waited, and gotten angry, and done everything. And I'm still here tonight. My neighbors don't have this. I'd like it settled and gone and off my property. Thank you.
Thank you, and there's no reason for you to feel embarrassed for coming up here. Council, questions, comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Kane, for coming in again. When we looked at the ordinance, we talked about the shielding, we did talk about it. If it's just as simple as that, I don't know how, if it solves one problem, it may solve others that didn't come before us, because shielding, it depends on how we're supposed to shield them, though, because that's what my argument was at the last meeting, is not knowing how, I can't shield something that has come in a certain fashion, already manufactured. I don't know how to, I'm just, as a, just a normal person, I don't know how to personally do that. So if I have to, if I had my carriage lights that are in the garage, on all the time, how, how, I guess, I would need to know how we can put shielding into the ordinance by, and what information we would need, so everyone could understand what that would take to do so, for people to be in compliance. And I think that's why we didn't move forward with that, because of that issue.
Have a comment?
Just a quickie, there are shields for every kind of light that can be purchased, anywhere from $5.20 to 44, this is even floodlights, spotlights, carriage lights, scope lights, you name it, it's out there. I'm not even asking for that. This should be a nuisance, and if not, it should be complaint-driven. I mean, when you can physically see it, and I have invited members here to my house to come, you don't even have to come inside my house, if I open my front door, you look through my window, you'll see the shadows when I'm walking, you'll see the light in my house, because it's illuminated inside. So nuisance-driven perhaps, or complaint-driven, is what would need to happen right now, because if we're waiting for this, everything else, it will probably be years. That's just the way this motion goes, I mean, so, but you can get shields, and they do not interfere with the wiring. You can take a, a, a light that has a 60-watt max bulb, and you can put a 25-watt bulb in it, or 40, because it's the wiring that brings in the electricity only to that maximum level. The bulb draws it in based on that. But you can't take a 60-watt fixture and put in a 75-watt bulb, you're gonna get it hot in time, if it's on a lot, you're gonna burn wires or stuff. That's when you're at risk, but you can go down, and I, that's it, I, I'm done.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, on the commercial and multifamily side, we have an ordinance that requires this exact issue when it's directed at a residential property, right? So it has to be shielded. There's no definition in that ordinance, but everything seems to be in compliance, nobody has a problem. But when we had the last discussion, we all got hung up on this, one issue residential or residential. So, the hard part for me is, there, there's a lot of sentiment to say, well, just your neighbors, you know, work it out amongst yourselves. So I remember, and I'm sure as well as my colleagues do, I got elected to represent every resident of Rochester, not just, I don't single them out. So, the neighbor thing works until it doesn't. So I would hope that we would have an opportunity at some point to rediscuss this, to see if we can make some accommodations to the nuisance ordinance. It works on the commercial side, I'm pretty sure we can make it work on the residential
Councilmember Peterson?
Right, and our discussion was either it was to be directed away from, or shielded. So as in the illustration, so, I too think that, you know, if we have it for one, I don't know why we can't have it for the other, they're all the same lights, well, not exactly, they're a lot brighter, for safety purposes on commercial.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So I, I think we also discussed at the last meeting, we asked Chief Cislik, we gave him an assignment, and so I think we first, council needs a report out on that assignment before we consider any other action.
Mr. City Manager, you, you have a report out?
I think we have, the chief has made an initial conversation, and I think he's working on a second one, if I've been informed, Dan Nick's nodding his head. So I think they're working with the resident or residents to see if something could be done. I'd be happy, though, to get a written statement from the chief included in Friday's manager's report.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I did talk to the fire chief, and he did attempt to make contact with the, the owner, whoever's at that house, was unsuccessful, but then there was a, a letter sent to that property, explaining that there was a complaint about the light, and I'm paraphrasing, of course, but requested an opportunity to come to talk about how that could be, not remedied, because it's not in violation, but to, to improve the situation. And when I last spoke with the fire chief, that conversation, that, that letter did not trigger response yet, so he is still actively attempting to, to talk with that individual.
So is there consensus that we wait maybe by the next meeting, hopefully?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so, we'll bring this topic up again, and we'll hopefully have, hopefully the chief can make contact if, if possible, and have a report for us.
Understood.
Okay.
Pretty good, thank you. Okay, next, is approval of the minutes, is consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 28, 2022?
Do you want to ask her Zoom public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Brian, is there any?
There's no comment, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, next is approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes for the regular meeting of March 28, 2022.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of a special event application from Woodhouse, Day Spa, and the New Day Foundation to hold the Color of Wellness 5K on Saturday, July 20, in the park and on the trails. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Dynasor Hill and Rochester's Lions Club to hold the Greater Rochester Heritage Days Event on May 28 and 29 in the park. Next is consideration of a special event application from the C A G D charity to hold their Voice of Spring Concert on Saturday, June 18, in the band shell. And last is a review of the current 2022 event calendar.
And the West Nile.
I'm sorry, thank you. And as a request to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a reimbursement request to Oakland County, our Oakland County person's still here, under the West Nile Virus Prevention Reimbursement Program.
Motion to approve as presented.
Support. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, just happy to see all the events coming back, and I would expect to see more events coming before us, and coming on that event calendar is, I expect it to be a pretty busy summer.
Very good. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. Next is old business and table items, is a request to waive the parking fees for the outdoor dining platforms. So we discuss whether the city should waive that fee or not, and this is back up for discussion tonight.
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the parking fees for the outdoor dining platforms.
Your Honor, I believe that that action would be, there doesn't need to be a motion and/or support, the motion that is in the memo is back to for a revote.
It's back, it's back to, okay. So now there's discussion.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so, I just, in the spirit of helping these businesses move forward this year, they, you know, we took care of it last, they took care of everything last year, et cetera, I just think it's something that, as I've said, is in kind on our part to present this to them this year without the fees.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with Councilmember Peterson, and, and the packet, or the email we received late this afternoon, that detailed how much that the DDA had spent in terms of building the platforms, paying for the parking spaces where the platforms were, and over the last two years, as Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Peterson mentioned, this is, this is not a discussion on $21,000, this is more a principle. We all, we all sit up here and we love the DDA, we love our downtown, we love everything they've done for us, and as we talked about last meeting, and as I talked about last meeting, you know, $1.3 million in support when we needed it during the pandemic. So I think it'd be a, a, a good sign of our three-legged stool that we pass this motion to cover this as $21,000 this year, and help the DDA, help support our businesses, so all of our residents and visitors to our regional downtown can continue to eat outside dining like they've done the last two years. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. I see this as an implicit cost, if we decide to charge the DDA for it, it's essentially charging ourselves, we're all one community here, and I appreciate what these dining platforms have done for our community and downtown, and I'd like to see them continue, so I'm in support of waiving the fee.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. So Councilmember Albrecht did state that we did receive some information, so there are 14 parking spaces available for platforms for businesses to use. In 2020, the program began, the cost of the decks, which was a total of $112,000, was paid for by the DDA, and the general fund, the city side general fund taxes have never paid for these parking costs. So we have recently raised rates to get our parking system to the, the gold place where we want people who are using the system to pay for the system, to pay for the debts on, debt on it. So we've been making adjustments, we've also lowered the parking in Lou, it's down to $1,000, so we've done that for economic development, to help our businesses. But I really feel like this needs to be business as usual. The city has never paid or paid for these parking fees for the decks, or not the decks, the, the structures, the platforms, and I, I just don't see why that the city should pay for this. This is, this is development, this is DDA-type activity, that the cost to it belong either in the DDA, or it should be shared by the business who's, who have this opportunity. I really support it, it's been great for the businesses, but I feel like if city council authorizes the city budget to pay for this, we're kind of picking the winners and losers here. We are, there are no state restrictions any longer on businesses, so why would we pick the, the restaurants versus other stores in town? So I do not support this.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, it is true, there are, there are not restrictions, but the biggest problem we have right now is employment, right? The employees, these businesses able to stay open because of lack of employees. And I also, I'm gonna go back a few years to where all these business owners paid into these parking decks as well, with the special assessments that were placed on them. This is not about, this is about for us giving back to our own community, because everyone uses these. These have changed the dynamic of our downtown for people who want to dine, and have made us more inclusive with all the other communities like us that have done them. And it's been a very, it's been very successful in the growth of the community, and I don't know, I, well, then, if we're not going to give them $21,000, then I'd like the city to reimburse them the 1.3 million, and then DDA wouldn't be, you know, coming back for anything. I mean, it's, you have to look it into perspective, they helped us, and that meant the business owners helped us during the most trying times that this town has seen for business, so, that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Gould?
We're waiting breathlessly for your comments.
I apologize for missing this exciting meeting. I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Peterson, I don't think that the benefit of those ramps is confined just to the restaurants in the city, I think that helps to bring people to the city. More people in the city, the businesses all prosper, and that spreads out to the rest of the community, so I would definitely vote, be voting when it comes to waive that fee.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess I look at this as not a core city service, right? It's never come up in a budget to where we have to support this type of activity. So, I also look at it, too,
But I really feel like this needs to be business as usual. The city has never paid or paid for these parking fees for the decks, or not the decks, the, the structures, the platforms. And I, I just don't see why that the city should pay for this. This is, this is development, this is DDA-type activity that the cost to it belong either in the DDA or it should be shared by the business who's, who have this opportunity. I really support it. It's been great for the businesses, but I feel like if city council authorizes the city budget to pay for this, we're kind of picking the winners and losers here. We are, there are no state restrictions any longer on businesses, so why would we pick the, the restaurants versus other stores in town? So I do not support this.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, it is true, there are, there are not restrictions, but the biggest problem we have right now is employment, right? The employees, these businesses able to stay open because of lack of employees. And I also, I'm going to go back a few years to where all these business owners paid into these parking decks as well with the special assessments that were placed on them. This is not about, this is about for us giving back to our own community because everyone uses these. These have changed the dynamic of our downtown for people who want to dine and have made us more inclusive with all the other communities like us that have done them. And it's been a very, it's been very successful in the growth of the community. And I don't know, I, well, then if we're not going to give them $21,000, then I'd like the city to reimburse them the 1.3 million. And then DDA wouldn't be, you know, coming back for anything. I mean, it's, you have to look it into perspective. They helped us, and that meant the business owners helped us during the most trying times that this town has seen for business. So that's all I have to say.
Councilmember Gould. We're waiting breathlessly for your comments.
I apologize for missing this exciting meeting. I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Peterson. I don't think that the benefit of those ramps is confined just to the restaurants in the city. I think that helps to bring people to the city. More people in the city, the businesses all prosper, and that spreads out to the rest of the community. So I would definitely be voting when it comes to waive that fee.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I look at this as not a core city service, right? It's never come up in a budget to where we have to support this type of activity. So I also look at it, too. So the Parklets have an opportunity, you can't put one on Main Street, right? So we eliminate all those merchants, right? The state won't let us, they already told us that. So it's only the side streets. So now we're down to, so I disagree, it's a, it is a finite amount of people that could benefit from this. So we have 14 of these. Okay, so next year, so we approved this 21. So next year, we get 50 of these. So now we continue to pay for the subsidy to the merchants? I'm just asking the hypothetical question here.
Is that a rhetorical question, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I made that motion at the last meeting because the DDA came before us to have the 50,000 waived, and we wouldn't waive that 50,000 ask either, right? In lieu of what they had paid already. So instead of doing that, I said, well, then if we're going to have to give them the 50,000 at the next meeting, then why don't we waive the platforms because it is the best thing for the community right now.
Councilmember Sage, you come in.
Yes, so maybe a thought here is beyond the 14, it becomes the business responsibility to not only buy and construct the thing, but then to support or subsidize the parking revenue that it's going to take up. I don't see that as a hard ask.
Councilmember Albrecht.
That was a rhetorical question because I have not heard the DDA nor gotten any inkling that we are looking to build more parking platforms or add more parking platforms. We knew two years ago that Main Street would not allow it. We put the 14 where we could to support businesses off the, the avenues or first, second, third streets. So I, I want to deal with the here and now, which is this, this year's ask. And again, I, I respect and I like the debate we have on this issue, but I go back to a couple of things Councilmember Peterson said. Yes, the DDA did fund $1.3 million when we needed it the most, didn't bat an eye, took money out of their capital fund to make sure we went forward. We did vote on the 50,000 last meeting, and again, that was voted down. So again, you know, $21,000, this is principle. I think it's us showing support to our community, to our downtown. Our downtown is a regional downtown. Our downtown is one that many people come to, and having these parking platforms, and it's not like we are the smartest people in the room. Royal Oak is doing these, Birmingham's doing these, a lot of communities are doing these. I just think this would be a sign of goodwill and good faith to the DDA for us to approve this and waive the $21,000 this year.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I, I have a question on the parking structures. They're not always full and at full capacity. Is that a correct assumption? Do we know they're not selling out? So by eliminating these parking spaces, no, we're not generating the revenue by parking in that specific space, but there's still parking in downtown. They're still going to park in the structure or in another spot. So they're just going to park somewhere else. So I don't see it as a total loss to us.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, Mayor, and, and you know, and to actually go back to when we actually put these together, the DDA took on that expense because at that time, we needed space for these businesses to bring in people to eat because we were under so many restrictions. That's what that was about. It wasn't about anything else. And I think that's where right now, I mean, it's $21,000. I'm just going to call the question.
So I'd like to make a comment. So I do, I do agree that it's a small amount, and we're not that far apart, and we work well together, and so this isn't an indictment. I will say, I have to disagree a little bit on principle is that the, the DDA, I mean, we're acting like the DDA did us a favor. These are taxpayer dollars that we needed in a pandemic. So to think that, well, we owe them back or they did us a favor and we need, you know, that's, I just reject that. They did what they were supposed to do to help the downtown. I was on the DDA, I voted for all those things, I think we did a great job. But that, you know, we have to give them their money back or something, that's ridiculous in my opinion. You know, and then I, you know, the question I have is like the mayor Pro Tem has is, you know, when does this stop? Do we do it the next year? Do we do it the next year? And when does the businesses start to have to bear some responsibility for this? So, and really, in my opinion, the city nor the DDA should be paying for this. It should be the businesses. They're getting a benefit. It's only, you know, $1,000 or something. So I think that's fair, but I think that, you know, it's a good debate. We have this in good faith, and now we can vote. So Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
No.
Salvia.
No.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
No.
Okay, so the, it passes, so the city movie thing for those parking tax issue. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing, a public hearing to consider and adopt the master plan and updated appendices. So Mr. City Manager, did you want to say something before we open the public hearing?
We do have a representative from Beckett and Rader who's here, as well as this has gone through the Planning Commission, and it is now set for city council for the public hearing as well as adoption if council is ready. It is past the, well past the 63-day amount of time, and the packet that has been updated is online, as well as there's a hard copy in front of every council member.
Pretty good. So before we open the public hearing, is there any questions for the consultant?
It's good to see you live. We've seen on Zoom all the time. Welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, thank you for welcoming me back.
He, he came to the Planning Commission immediately, he's making that drive from Ann Arbor.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing at 7:57. Are there any public comments? I will close the public hearing at 7:57. Counsel. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, I don't, mine are more aesthetics because like in the back pages where it's in the blue slides with the white, it's extremely hard to read. And that, you find that in a few of these slides, even with the green and the white, very hard to read. I don't know if it can be bolded lettering or whatever, just to, or a little bit, made a little bit larger, something where people could actually read the sensitives going out to the public. I think it was very well done. There's a lot of information, though, and it's a little refreshing to have it updated.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. So I, I think all of council and the planning commission has spent a considerable amount of time, and thank you Beckett and Rader for your time as well on this. This has been a project through a pandemic. You know, we did Zoom sessions, we did in-person sessions pretty safely last summer. Been a lot of iterations and changes to this. I'm happy to see Appendix G is now included, which is the list of our future projects that we're working on. And I, I think at this point in time, we've had enough time to digest it, and I hope we can move on to actually implementing it and using it. So I would make a motion that we adopt the City of Rochester Master Plan as presented.
Support.
Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, support by Councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Uh, Mayor.
Councilmember Sage. I was looking at Councilmember Sage, I didn't see.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at one point, did we consider putting in all those community projects within the master, are they already?
It's in there. It's in the.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at. Yeah. Okay, great.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor, so the appropriate action would be to approve the resolution that's on, I think, page two in the packet, so directly behind the draft master plan document, there is the actual resolution that Beckett and Rader did put together for council's consideration. There's just the legal, Public Act and those components.
Is that good with the maker and the second?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Now we can vote. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Great. And thank you to the consulting firm, thanks for, to all the city employees for their hard work. I know this is a major project. Thank you for everybody publicly participated. This is a major project, so it's good to get this done, and probably time to start on the next one. Just kidding.
We'll start on the implementation.
There you go.
There is a good implementation list.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you for coming. Have a good trip back.
Congrats on your new plan.
Just one, so this will be called the March 2022 Master Plan, not, the last one was like five years, it was titled something different. So the, going forward, City Manager, this will be referred to as the 2022 Master Plan? Because I'm just looking at the cover page, it just says Draft Master Plan, March 2022. Just as we historically reference this in the future, what is this going to be called?
Yep, so this is going to be, we'll remove the draft master plan, we'll have this posted, we'll send it out to the state and the county and our neighbors. But yes, the date down at the bottom, as it went through the Planning Commission, and then through this group, we'll, we'll state the March 2022 date down at the bottom.
Thank you.
March of '22, even though it's April, right? Okay, legislative deliberation, there's nothing. We're onto reports from regular business. First is the 2022 Non-Union Wage and Benefit Study Report and Recommendations for Approval. Mr. City Manager, you want to open?
Yep, I'll start, and again, our consultant is joining us by our Zoom connection. Again, just as a reminder, Gov HR is the consultant that we hired to do our wage and benefits portion of the study. A classification component was not included. Again, as we noted in the past, that we had the Notley Report that actually did look through our job descriptions at that point in time and went through the classification. Rachel from Gov HR did listen to council's comments from about a month ago, went through those, included both the, within the chart, the information regarding adding both Birmingham and Auburn Hills, as well as got updated information regarding our benefits from our health and benefit broker. I believe those were the changes that are reflected. And then in your packet, in the actual document that's also on the website, I want to say it's on page 12 or 14, depending on if you're counting the cover and some of the other ones, is the various charts. I will highlight, as we went through, there was the discussion last time of doing the percent, percent range at the 25 and then the 30 and the 35. For our overall recommendations, we actually simplified that and moved all the recommendations to the 30th percentile range, and then looked at options of the original, which is without Birmingham and Auburn Hills, with a plus one, which was including Birmingham, and then the plus two. And I'll let Rachel get in and explain, you know, the results of that and the impacts. And then I'd be happy at the end, I have my memo that I stated my recommendations as well.
Rachel, do you have some comments?
Yeah, just a few. Thanks for having me. Nice to see you all again. So Blaine explained that pretty well, so we just went with the 30% range spread with those three options that are all included on there. We didn't have information from Birmingham and Auburn Hills for every position, but included it for the positions we had and reflected that in the analysis that's ultimately shown on Table, Table One, which is on page 12, if you're going by the page numbers at the bottom. So that's kind of summarized in Table One, all of the external market data for those three different scenarios. So happy to answer any questions or dive into any more detail that you want regarding that.
Any questions for Rachel? Okay, counsel? Councilmember Albrecht?
I guess I'll start. I've, I've had several conversations with City Manager Wing, and thank you for that. And I've always used the reference of, you know, you only get one bite at the apple. What does that mean? Meaning when you can adjust salaries? I would like to say that's an old HR term, but I think it's just a term I made up. But as I look at the recommendations, and I'm looking at the page 12, we're focusing on the column, City Manager's recommended, which I support, the 30% range plus the one community data. So it's the second from the right column, and in that, we are looking at adjusting the salaries of four positions at a cost of just under $25,000. That's based on the good work that Gov HR has done. They've put in some protocol and, and how they've given those increases to, to match the data they, they've received. I'm fine with that. I think that's only half the apple, so to speak, going back to my analogy. My feeling is that we are in, I don't want to use unprecedented times because everybody says that, but we are in times that we are competing for labor, restaurants, businesses, on the Ra-Ra Board, we're trying to find summer counselors. Everybody's looking for help these days. And we need to be competitive. This is a great city. This is a well-run city. We have a good council up here. But I think we've only done half the job. I think the government, Gov HR report is suggesting these increases for these four positions, which is on the report. I have no issue with those. I would like to suggest to the mayor that we create an ad hoc committee to do the other half of the apple. Appoint two to three council members to work with Blaine and city administration to look at other positions here that we want to make maybe further adjustments to, to make sure we are competitive for each and every one of these 19 positions. I'd also like to see those three positions we've just hired for added in here and the data added into that, so that when we look at this, we may come back and say, position X is getting a two, I'm just making up numbers here, folks. Position X is getting a $2,000 increase based on Gov HR's recommendation. We all, we're good with that. But this committee may look at it and say, position X is bench strength for position D, and we may need to do more for that position. And there may be other positions like that where we can, where we can say, again, working with administration, coming back to council for council approval, that we would like to further adjust four or five other positions, or some of the positions that have already been recommended for adjustment by Gov HR. To me, then, we've taken the full bite at the apple. We've taken what Gov HR has given us with all their knowledge and experience in this and using the data from the communities we, they initially selected and adding in the, the data from Birmingham, we, I think we dropped off Auburn Hills based on the recommendation. And then let us have, have good dialogue and discussion with, with Blaine and, and Nick or whoever Blaine wants to have on there, and Joellen perhaps, and with two or three council members. I'd like to be one of those council members if that, if, if the mayor feels this is, or the city council feels this is a good idea. And then be able to come back at a later date, say, and, and I would set a number saying the not to exceed $25,000 in adjustments. Because when you look at what we've had here, we have 25,000 or 24,913, add another 25,000, we've saved that in salary consolidation in the last year. Anyway, so this is not, I'm not looking to spend money we don't have. We've already saved that money through, through position consolidation. But I want to make sure at the end of the day, whatever that day is, sometime in May or wherever it takes us, that we can say, our employees are competitively paid, we've looked at it through every way, shape, manner, form, we can look them in the eye and say, we've done this, we've had a government, Gov HR come in, we've had this committee look at it, and I would invite the different department heads to come in and meet with the committee, you know, with their, with their suggestions, with their recommendations. I want full transparency. I, I don't like things hidden, and I'm not suggesting anything's hidden here. Please don't mistake that, that statement. I just want to make sure we've done this right. You know, we haven't, the last time we did this report was 2013, it's 2022, we've just come through a pandemic, we have the great resignation, we've got the boomerang hiring going on right now. I want to make sure we do this right. So Mayor, that would be my recommendation to establish an ad hoc committee to work with administration to, to further explore adjustments for any one of these 19, or I don't know how many positions we have now, Blaine, with the three new positions, it might be now 20 or 21.
It's, actually goes down 18.
Okay. I don't know if I need to make a motion, or I'm, I'm really just talking out loud right now, so I'll defer to what.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Well, I would just say that I, I think that's an excellent idea, and if we need a motion, I would support that motion. But I think it's also important that we state something we haven't talked a lot about is that one of the we haven't talked a lot about is that one of the things we've studied in this is the benefits. And there are no changes recommended to our benefits. And so that means our benefits are competitive. So we're talking about wage adjustments only. Our benefits are competitive. So I think that's important to reflect that as well.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. Well, benefits are competitive at the moment, but they will be going up. And then we might not be as competitive, you know, in the percent that employees have to pay. But, all right, so I have gone through this very well, too. So I appreciate Councilperson Albrecht's comments regarding this. And I do think there needs to be more discussion, except for the fact that my job's not to micromanage the city. I was just supposed to help give the input to move forward. I think one of the biggest issues I see is that we do not have, which is making this difficult, because I'm not schooled in HR 100% like Mark is and, you know, other people. I've had my fair share of working in companies and running that with employees and having to do that. However, we don't have that HR Director here, right? We don't have a full-fledged, single HR Director person. And I think that person is what we are missing. And based on the numbers in here, because it is listed, but it's 83,000 and we don't have one, we have a few things in play. One, that would take us out of that situation of being the ones to sit down and discuss and get into the minute details of the employees here at the city. And I think that's something that we need more information on really how this has been presented. When I went through this and looked at it, I took the simple factor, I thought we should move everybody up to the average pay to be able to keep everybody, just like you stated, because of the times that we are in and the competition we are in up against the private market. And because it is, does cost us, city, too much to keep finding employees. And as we were told at the last meeting, all these employees have left for more money. Okay? So that puts us really at a huge disadvantage. We will continue having a revolving door then. And I do think it needs more. But I do think if we had that HR person who could work on that with our HR Generalist and things like that, we would have not only somebody who really knows what's happening with employees and the grading of them and all their reviews, et cetera, it would actually help. But also, it would take us to the part that, so I made a bunch of notes when I was going through this here. I think it would actually also help us, and just bear with me, that it'll help keep our city manager out of harm's way if we had disgruntled employees or anyone that were to file a lawsuit. Because the way our city policy is written, it doesn't have a total, they do not have, they do not have a process for redress that actually would help us all, even here, sitting here to do our job. So in light of all of these positions, I think I'm very happy for the 30%. But I don't think that we're addressing the employees as a whole. And when you go through these and look at the differences in what they're getting, also, I don't know why we're in here going through the, having the DDA numbers either, because we haven't really spoken to the DDA on how they wanted to handle that. I'd like to see us change, well, really look at how we are handling the employees in this wage study moving forward.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, so I also, I like the idea of forming an ad hoc committee. Do we need a motion on, are we accepting this tonight? Or are we pushing this to after the committee meets?
Pushing.
To talk about?
There's too many questions.
Mayor Protem Sylvia?
So I think, I think the thought would be a motion to create the ad hoc committee, but have council approve a not-to-exceed budget that could be allocated as a part of that process. To me, that still involves the council and has the financial controls in place, but yet gives really what Councilmember Albrecht was saying in terms of the other bite of the apple, where we need some management discretion in terms of how this is handled. So is that a motion that's required? I need some direction.
You can either, you know, it depends on if you'd like, I guess, to set up a dollar amount. That would probably need to be a motion. You can give staff direction on some of the other parts. So it's up to council on what you.
All right. So I'll take a stab at, I'll make a motion that we're going to accept the report that was presented through Gov HR and ask the mayor to establish an ad hoc committee consisting of City Administration and three council members with a not-to-exceed budget of 20, we'll say $25,000.
We don't have a dollar amount yet, though, for that.
Yeah. So we're, we've also asked to lay in all the positions, right? So we have a full.
The 18 positions. We're reviewing 18 positions.
Right.
And just at the average alone, if you looked at just the average alone of every employee in our city, that's $146,000 in differences of where they're at compared to the public marketplace with the other cities.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. And what's being proposed in this current offering was not to exceed $60,000. Would this committee be reviewing the existing proposal or the other, the other side of it? That's, that's what I was understanding. Is that correct, that we had 60,000 that in this proposal we were planning for?
Councilmember Albrecht?
Well, City Manager should probably want to.
Yeah, so the 60,000 is actually for upcoming budget request. That has nothing to do with our current, current conversation.
And just to clarify, Mayor Protem's ask, we are, I'm fine with the 24,913 that you see in column 30, 30% range spread plus one community. That, to me, that money, I would be comfortable approving that even tonight, the Gov HR report. To me, they've done their job. They've provided some very good recommendations based on rationale. That I would vote for tonight and support that and the good work that they've done. I'm, I think what Mayor Protem is saying, the additional, the second bite of the apple would be not to exceed $25,000. So if we did, let's just say we spent, we came back, or whatever this committee came back to City Council and said, we have another $25,000 worth of adjustments for X number of people, the total cost would still be, would be just below $50,000 for all adjustments, including, including the 24,9 here and whatever the committee comes up with. So I just wanted to further explain.
So I could amend my motion to 50,000?
Perfect.
Not to exceed 50?
And it's still in that range that we budgeted for already.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Support? Councilmember Sage, support. Councilmember, I have, I have a quick question for Councilmember. So is this going to talk about performance as well?
Performance, if I may, performance is performance. Pay for performance. If Amanda and I were hired in similar positions and after three, and we both came in at the same amount, and she got outstandings or 3%, and I got goods to 2%, three years later, she's going to be making more than me, and she should, because she's performed better. So this, we're not going to.
Is that, is that one of the things you're going to be looking at, is when you review these 18 positions, are you going to be looking at just the, the range in that salary? Or are you going to also be looking individual performance for each of the persons sitting in that spot? Or is this just the job description?
I think that's, that's a great question, Mayor. And I would really defer to City Manager Wing. I think we should look at all aspects of it. If this ad hoc committee comes and says, we want to give Mark $5,000 and, you know, to catch up with Amanda, and Mark's been a good performer and Amanda's been an outstanding performer, I think that's a variable we should be looking at. And we should probably not approve Mark getting that increase because his performance has lagged Amanda. So I think that's a variable that committee would look at.
Are there legal issues, though, if you put, you know, I mean, and that's maybe something that has to be considered with the committee? So just, I like the idea of performance. But I was just curious, are we just moving the ranges? Or are we actually going to say, this person is going to get 5% because they're doing great, and this person's going to get 1% because they're not doing great?
Again, my, my opinion, if I was on this committee, would be, no, I would look at the communities where we have average salaries for positions and say, okay, in this position, the average salary is X. And, you know, if we want, if we want to protect the person in that position from, to not go to that, to one of these other communities, we are recommending maybe moving them up within the range to another salary. And again, I would, I would expect that City Manager Wing and the respective department heads would weigh in to say, where there are performance issues, or somebody is outperforming somebody else, so that we don't recommend something that goes counter to what Mayor, what City Manager Wing is trying to do. And again, making sure it passes the, the legal test with City Attorney Crot.
Mr. City Manager, are you good with that?
I would actually just use the Labor Attorney instead of our city, general city council. There are, I mean, to me, I've noted at least four different issues that council would need to be made aware of with our Labor Attorney. There's, I don't think you guys want to be doing several of the things that were suggested, as that would be counter to actual law. So I think you would like, like the Labor Attorney to advise you on those matters. And I'd be happy to meet with, you know, whatever committee that council chooses to make up. For me, I guess, I'm probably the clerk for clarification. And I would note, for one of the positions, so all three of the new positions, that, that was included in this already. So those titles of those positions in here. We don't have data from other communities because we made, basically made up job descriptions. So there's not comparable data, other than for the deputy city manager position. For the other two, they're combined positions, so there's not anything really to compare it to. For one of the positions, the deputy city manager, I would urge council to pass what was both Gov HR and myself are recommending, because I am not able to write a job offer until that new range is actually put in place. And so what I stated, that this would go into effect as of April 18. Again, council could always choose to go beyond what, what would be approved tonight with any adjustments going forward. But so that I'm able to at least make a conditional job offer for one of the applicants, I would ask that the wage schedule as presented, which is the 30% range plus one community, so that's using the Birmingham as well, is, is hopefully approved tonight so that I can make that job offer. If council chooses not to, I would at least like the authority to, for the deputy city manager position, to have that authority for that position so that we could continue. My goal is to have that position overlap with our retiring deputy city manager. And I would not like to just miss by two weeks or by a month as we're going through this process.
So is the maker of the motion okay with that?
So my preference in that would be to the, the third option, which would allow you to, to hire the individual.
Just that. Councilmember Gould?
Any of those work?
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if we shouldn't un-yoke this motion into two component parts, because I'm still a little bit unclear as to, is the, the charge of this ad hoc committee, is it position-dependent or person-dependent? Are we considering performance or not? I'd like some clarity on that charge.
And do, and maybe that committee hasn't figured that out yet, and they need to do that. Councilmember Albrecht, do you have a comment?
Again.
You don't have, I'm not calling on you.
I'm, I'm looking at, the committee should look at positions within the ranges and the data provided.
So not performance?
Right.
So performance is when somebody gets their annual review and then does the same, Mr. City Manager, do you have discretion? Or do you feel like you have enough cash to, to do that?
So we currently have, up to the 25 is what's budgeted in this current budget. So if you postpone approving this, again, that gets closer and closer to the June 30. You could ask to carry that amount over to the, the next one. Right now, the recommended one is 24,913. So that one is approved, or if approved, would be within the amount of funds that we have. Additionally, based on the timing, since we wouldn't be implementing this until April, we also could choose to even go with that higher one, which is with the plus two communities. I would again urge against adding in a new comparable community of Auburn Hills, and I can get into that. But I think we're focused on this, more of the center one, seems to be. So that's within this current budget. If it's for our upcoming budget, then it's up to council's discretion on how much money you guys set aside. I think there's going to be a component of what the city charter states that the city manager's positions overseeing. And if council is wanting to deviate from that, then I guess you're reducing the city manager's authority, which is fine, that's council's purview. But that's one of the things that the Labor Attorney would, would speak to, to this group and then eventually to council. Currently, council has direct authority over the city manager position, the treasurer, finance director, and the city clerk positions. Those are the three that council has direct control over.
So your motion to hire the one person, what, what do we need for that?
So I need the authorization for the deputy city manager range, which, if we're going to stick to that range, which would be in the 30, that range would now be from $95,039 up to 123,550.
Make a motion to authorize this.
There's already a motion on the floor by Councilmember Sylvia. So we have to discharge that one before new ones can be made.
So we're just amending, we're just amending my motion to include that range just referenced by the city manager. Thank you.
Okay. So is everybody clear on that motion now?
No, we restated.
Mrs. Madam Clerk?
So it's to accept the report from Gov HR regarding the wage survey and have the mayor establish a committee with three city council members and members of administration. They have not to exceed a budget of $25,000 and also authorize the new range for the deputy city manager position.
I thought the budget was 50.
The current budget actually is 25. I mean, if you guys want to amend what is in the current budget, the funds that are available at this particular moment is the 25.
That would be for this fiscal year.
This current fiscal year that ends on June 30. There's a request for 60 with the upcoming budget. But again, the current funds during this fiscal year is that 25.
So let's make sure it's clear for all of council. So it's 25 for the current budget year, which would equate to 50 in the next budget year.
But we need 60 for the next budget year, I thought. Or is that the, was that the proposal, I thought?
That was the proposal. Again, this committee could say you need 75, or actually, Penstemon Peterson actually calculated out at 143. I think I was at 145. So we're pretty close, depending on where the positions land for the average salary.
So again, the, as, as the maker of the motion, the goal of the motion was to engage all of city council from a financial standpoint on the authorization, really allow the city manager to do his job in terms of implementation with the guidance of the committee. So really not trying to take authority away from the city manager, but give that extra level of guidance and discussion around the details of implementation.
Councilmember Peterson?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So, well, I'm not comfortable with any of that, and I'm not comfortable with the ad hoc committee either, for purposes of, I mean, I think, I'm just going to state only, I feel like only one person up here sitting on council actually has the knowledge to be able to sit on an ad hoc committee to discuss this type of thing. But I don't like that we are going to just push this through and give a new hire way more money than what we currently pay a current position, because I see that as a huge disconnect. And I think we're picking winners and losers here by not taking into account all the employees at one time. And then I will not be a part of anything to do with this motion at all to where I am, where our employees are being separated and discussed based on whether position, performance, anything, I think that's crossing the line. That's not our job here. So I'm not in favor of any of this here. I think that we don't have enough information to, Councilmember Albrecht's point, to take a bite at that of the whole entire apple to see what we're doing here. point, to take a bite at that, of the whole entire apple to see what we're doing here, um, with all employees. And I think it's only fair, because if I was one of the employees that I just heard that, well, we're only going to do the four and the rest of them, we're going to just meet and talk about to discuss that, how we're going to do that, that's not my job. That's not, it's not fair to the employees. And I would hate to have any employee get an, an employment attorney and bring it forth to file lawsuit against us for this type of action. So I'm not going to discuss anymore regarding this here as presented with the motion tonight.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Do you have a comment, Councilmember Sage? I just wanted clarification. So if we don't approve the range for the Deputy City Manager, we can't hire that person?
It's outside of our current range and I would not have the authority, nor would council. Uh, so you'd have to either give me the authority, uh, you could give me a dollar amount authority for me to hire him. Um, you don't have to specifically say that range. Uh, the range would be the cleanest way. Um, but I, I could also ask for, request for that authority, just to offer, be able, but I would not be able, it's over the authority of our current.
Okay. So the motion on, uh, that we're voting on now actually includes the range, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I have a clarifying question.
Councilmember Harrison?
So this is to not exceed $50,000, 24,0913?
Plus-
In the current budget year.
Current budget, the next budget, 50.
I, I guess I would feel more comfortable with 60,000, considering that was what the suggestion was from Gov. HR. Am I understanding that correctly?
The, the 60 was my, uh, budget estimate when I was doing the budget prep. So it could end up being 50. I mean, you guys could always amend the budget when you're going through.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And, um, I will, I will establish committee and I will, I will talk to individual council members, but my thought processes, it probably makes sense to have the existing budget committee be on that, be on that thing because of their numbers and, and things. So, um, but I, I don't want to put pressure on anybody, but I'll, I'll talk to them. Um, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, if I may, uh, City Clerk, would you make sure that my comments are in the minutes, please? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is a recommendations discussion of the updates to the employee handbook. Mr. City Manager?
Yep. All right. Thank you, Mayor. The next item here are two updates. Last year, council may remember, we, uh, approved our first overall comprehensive employee handbook. That's the 2021, uh, handbook. Um, as a best practice, uh, working with our, um, HR team as well as our Labor Attorney, there were two updates that we're recommending during 2022. Those are in particular, um, referencing section 407, which is the temporary responsibility pay or specialty, or sorry, special assignment pay. And the other one is, uh, the, uh, 802, which is the employee discipline. Uh, I provided in my memorandum the reasoning actually for both of those items. I specifically stated for 407, uh, the city has experienced, uh, three resignations over the past nine months. And while the city searched to fill those vacancies, uh, that necessary work was, uh, not handed to one specific employee, but handed out to several employees. Um, our current temporary responsibility pay, uh, or specialty pay assignment, um, did not really envision or encompass that. It was more that a, uh, position maybe at a grade three was then going to be, um, you know, now having to do work of a grade four or maybe a five. And so that only addressed that sort of a situation, not somebody doing, uh, just partial or one assignment or task. Um, so working with our Labor Attorney and then actually working with all the department directors, we came up with the language, uh, that is, uh, included. There's a, I'll call it red line, but it actually, the color that printed out, um, if you're looking at it, is, uh, green and purple. Um, not sure how Microsoft picks their colors. Um, as for the employee disciplinary component, um, we had a supervisor who, uh, did not use, um, our, uh, human resource person or our Labor Attorney or administration. And there has been the, uh, I guess, threat or, uh, notice made to the city that, uh, a grievance is pending, talking with the Labor Attorney to, uh, basically have a counter to their claim. Uh, what we're asking for is to, to add in, uh, basically one or two sentences, which now would say that when a disciplinary meeting involving a written warning or more severe discipline action is to be held with an employee, a HR representative, the city labor attorney, the city manager, or the deputy city manager must be present in that meeting. Uh, that both protects the city and also will note by having one of those individuals in the meeting that all of the specific rights, um, and, um, the collective bargaining agreed to terms, um, of being, uh, in compliance. Um, so tonight we're asking for both of those two amendments, uh, to, to be approved. And, um, if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Councilmember Sage? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so City Manager Wing, um, the recent employee handbook you gave us obviously does not include these two revisions, correct?
That's correct.
So, okay. And, and I would support these, uh, these revisions. But instead of printing up completely new, can we just put an insert in to the existing handbooks?
That, that's actually what we would do. We'd, uh, note it, um, probably with a sticker or some sort of thing, and then actually have an appendix to state that the date that it was actually updated and approved. HR, the Clerk's office, and, uh, the Labor Attorney will, will keep that on file as that book continues to grow. Um, we did print out, um, the hard copy for everybody, um, but we have it electronically, so it's going to be a little bit easier to have the red line in the history as we go forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Okay. So I've gone through your book quite a bit as well. And as far as that is concerned, on the 407 temporary responsibility pay, um, I would like to know why we have a not to exceed 500. Um, and I know it's based off of a 3% above the employee's regular base rate, but, um, that's going to change with the new numbers, um, that take place. So how, what's the 500 for?
Yep. So, uh, in there, it's a not to exceed 500 per employee per month. Um, that is a number, I won't say it's just arbitrary, but when we looked at the salary other than department head, so if you had another department head acting up for a department head, or the assistant city manager acting up for, uh, a city manager, you most likely would be using the, or the city would be using the provisions one and two, which are above, which is the 3% of the base of the pay, or the classification of the base rate of the pay of the higher level position. Um, so, uh, it's basically addressing the positions that are the director, are not the director or the assistant director level positions.
Okay. Then my follow-up for that, if I may, Mayor, is, um, okay, so, but we don't know what type of work they would be doing. So no matter what the work is, it's still going to be not to exceed a 500 per month, not counting how many hours or anything additional, correct?
Well, um, I guess it would, I guess without going into overtime, um, so what this would be doing is the regular time component, so be, be within the 40 hours. Uh, another, I guess, way to do it would be to ask the employee to, I guess, not do the $500 and to actually do the work at overtime rate, which would be a, a time and a half. Um, I guess I would need to work with the department director to actually see if that employee who's being assigned this additional duties, um, needs, has capacity or needs to work at overtime rate. Um, but the, the hope would be that there would be some potential capacity and so they would be, uh, compensated within the normal 40-hour working week.
Okay. But was that a variable that you would not know at that moment until you did that? Is this premature putting this in with that?
Uh, nope. We feel because of the, uh, sentence that's already in there before at the very end, that says this temporary pay adjustment shall be for a minimum of two weeks. Uh, um, so you basically, so if somebody goes on vacation for two weeks, we already are anticipating that we would have time to, uh, basically figure out what the work assignments would be.
Right. But you don't know what could happen. So, and then shall doesn't mean that it would have to take place anyhow, because we've learned that already here that shall's not like something that has to be done. So, um, I don't know, I just, uh, with that one, but that's how I feel on that. I think that one just has information that we don't know to be able to approve. Um, and then as far as employee discipline, um, I guess, that's fine. I just, I see right here, by having to write this up right now, that the biggest issue we have here is we do not have an independent person, which would be an HR, full HR director, to intervene in any type of situation that comes forth to our community. Okay? So, um, I know, no, nobody wants to probably discuss that tonight because they want to push this through, but I do think that that is something that is crucial that we are missing. And then I can lay that to go into, um, over to, uh, the same thing on page 59, where we have, if there's any harassment or anything else going on, that, this is a really, this is a really complicated layout for our employees to have a true method of redress to, um, take concerns. Um, there are just too many ifs in here and different people, uh, that they would be expected to go to. And with the, with effects of retaliation that could take place, because they really are, when you read how that's laid out, even on page 59, I see that. And on 60, where if there were any complaints against the, the city manager at any time, it's going to the city finance director. And I'm bringing this up for a purpose, and I would like the city attorney to weigh in or get back to us on this, because there was a resolution or document that was passed by council not too long ago, that city, the city finance director and the clerk are now under the purview of the city manager. And-
Only, only for evaluation and day-to-day things?
Okay, but let's-
Purview still is our decision to hire and fire.
That's fine. However, when it comes to the way the employees have a safe place to go to without fear of retaliation or anything for any type of situation, we don't have that party. We only have the city manager. And that person is the one in charge of the performance of those two parties now. So for city man, uh, city attorney, I, I think that we need to, we need to really dwell into, delve into this and get to the bottom of what we are doing, because in the end, we, we need to protect the city manager here. And I don't think we are with the way these changes are taking place so quickly and we're making changes on the fly on policy, like when that resolution was passed. And it didn't go into this year under, you know, if there were issues that another person is, is the one that's going to step in to act as that resource. But it's still being, based on performance, has to go to that person. So I don't, I don't want to be a part, because by the way, just council knows too, that if a lawsuit is brought before the city because we are not providing the employees with a method of duress to take care of their concerns and we're not provide, and we don't provide that, and we don't have the city do so, that we can be liable as well for any actions that take place.
Mayor, if I could, um, so the city charter puts the city manager position as the chief, uh, personnel officer. So, uh, if you'd like to amend the charter, that's, uh, up to council to, to, to make that adjustment. Um, the personnel manual, again, had a Labor Attorney make sure that the duress component was actually specifically spelled out with an alternative. If that chief officer happened to, uh, be potentially the person that, uh, is doing the harassment, there is both the, uh, anti-retaliation and other policies. Most likely, if that were to take place, you would put the, uh, city manager, assistant city manager, or one of those department heads on administrative leave. This actually spells out that the finance director, which is another position directly, uh, finance director slash treasurer, directly reporting to the city council would then be the position that's overseeing. Um, there may be, depending on the deputy city manager and, uh, the finance director, again, you would be getting counsel from a Labor Attorney. But all of the, uh, legal components are already in the current personnel, uh, handbook. And instead of having them separate, that's what took really from 2017 all the way to 2021, to have all of the city's policies reviewed, uh, in detail by several Labor Attorneys, uh, as well as looking at other communities and how they actually handle, uh, uh, specific issues, uh, regarding, uh, employment. Um, the two items before council tonight is regarding the temporary responsibility pay or the special assignment. Again, we weren't anticipating only a partial duty. Um, so I, I, I hope that's fairly self-explanatory. And then the disciplinary component, um, it basically would help us defend against or, or give a response to a, a potential union grievance that the unions told us that they would file, that we would actually have a, a witness or an administrative person, uh, Labor Attorney, HR person there, uh, as basically a secondary person. That would also help protect the city, um, by having a witness, if you will, that's on the management side.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Um, listening to what Councilman, Councilmember Peterson said and City Manager Wing's response, um, I think we're saying very similar things because, um, uh, Councilmember Peterson wants to make sure the city is protected and the city manager is protected. And I think the, uh, suggestions made in 802 help do that by having, um, you know, the, if, if a meeting's held, that you have, uh, human resources, a city labor attorney, the city manager, or the deputy city manager must be present in the meeting. That's best practices for HR to have, have somebody there, have the documentation done, so that if something does go bump in the night down the road, you've had people, uh, somebody there to witness what was said and, and, and what actually took place so that, uh, uh, protect the city. So I feel that 802, as written and as presented, um, protects the city, protects us as city council. So I would, I would support that. I would support both, both of these. Um, in my consulting practice, I were, I'm working on two or three other handbooks, and that is an arduous task that I wouldn't wish on anybody, because they're changing all the time and, uh, you know, all the things that have to go in there. So, uh, you could probably go through our handbook and still make half a dozen other changes based on what's going on, uh, uh, these days. But I would, uh, support, uh, this, uh, these changes. And I, if I cannot, make a motion to accept the recommended employee handbook updates and authorize the manager to implement them as soon as practical.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht?
Support.
Support by the Mayor Pro Tem. Discussion?
I have one, Mayor.
Uh, the Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. Um, I'd just like to comment, uh, because I saw her name up on the screen. We do have, the city does have Joellen Haynes, um, acting in the capacity of HR, what's her type?
Generalist.
Generalist. So the city does have an HR person on staff. And so I'm happy that she's here and part of the meeting tonight. Thank you, Joellen.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. And an HR generalist does not have the capability in a court of law to handle these types of situations when they arise. So there are lots of different attorneys out there, and employment attorneys are the ones that would handle an employee that came forth with a lawsuit. And I'm trying to make a point that we are making changes within these documents that not all, with not clear consideration of what the ramifications will be after there have been resolutions made in the past, changing, um, changing the authority of the city manager with some employees.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next receiver, report for the annual liquor relations report of 2021. So please, Chief. Chief Shettenhelm, welcome tonight. And your annual liquor report.
This is always fun reading.
Yes.
Only exceeded by the fun of responding to the call. Um, so each year, uh, we are charged by the city ordinance to do an annual liquor license, uh, report and inspection of all the Class C, essentially liquor by the class establishments in the city. Um, so it's accomplished in a number of ways. One is we look at all of these activity to those locations that's before you in that report. Um, we also, myself and the building official go out and do a inspection at each of the locations, looking primarily for liquor law violations as well as health and safety violations that, uh, could have occurred during the time from our last inspection. Also, in the middle of that inspection period, uh, the fire department is also doing inspections. So there's a lot of ways for us to make sure that our establishments are keeping up to date on, uh, health, safety, and liquor, uh, issues. Uh, we also look to see whether there's been any contact with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, to see whether their investigators have had any issues with those establishments. And lastly, we look at whether the taxes are up to date for those locations. So before you, is that, uh, the results of all of those examinations, um, we find that the activity, uh, is pretty good. Uh, certainly nothing that strikes us as being- Certainly nothing that strikes us as being worrisome from any particular location as we have had in some years past, the most recent years, things have been very good. As far as the violations, those are relatively minor in nature and have been corrected or in the process of being corrected. Most of those, the most common thing we see is a battery going out in the emergency lighting or an exit lighting, something that's helpful if the power goes out so that people can make their way to the exits and make it out of the building safely. We do have four establishments that we've, are working with to update their tax status with the city. And I don't believe we had any establishments that had any issues with the liquor control commission this year. So I certainly stand ready to answer any questions, uh, from the report. And I think, as I said, things are pretty good this year with our liquor establishment.
Chief, I have a question. I don't know if it's for the city manager, for the treasurer, um, because we've had these issues in the past. How, how bad are the tax situations?
Uh, well, I guess that's a relative question. You know, we, we have one establishment that's probably worse than the others. And as I said, we're working with those establishments. And I think in the past couple of years, we certainly took a position based on the current stat, status of, of the liquor establishments, of trying to give some leeway to have them work through that issue. And I guess it's a wish of council to continue with that vein and continue to take the measures we're taking to try to get those taxes paid.
Thank you.
Crank up the politeness is really what it is.
Any questions for the council? Councilmember Albrecht.
I just, I, I'd like to thank the chief and his, his staff. I know one of our areas that has always been a concern has been Main Street billiards and I see the trend has got, has been our friend going over the last four years continues to go down. So you've turned up the politeness and thank you very much for all that you and your team do to, to, to manage people having a good time and not being disruptive.
There's a balance that we all try to strike, for sure.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you very much.
Next is, uh, is accept a liquor license transfer application for the Royal Park Hotel instead of public hearing for May 9th. Mr. Police chief.
Yes, thank you. Before you is a liquor license application that has been submitted to transfer the current liquor license from JR Investors to FWREF2 Rochester LLC. We've done a review of the petitioner for that liquor license. The future owner of the liquor license had found no troublesome issues or anything to be concerned about. I know there's a representative here that can speak to any questions that we may have about the liquor license today. It's basically the opportunity to accept the liquor license application and to set a future public hearing on the liquor license of May 9th, when the application would actually be formally approved or reviewed.
By council. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, set the, to accept the liquor license application and set the public hearing for May 9th.
Motion by councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by councilmember Sage. Madam clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Do we have the new applicant like to, do you like to introduce yourself and give us a little brief summary of what's going on?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for having me. My name is Patrick Howe. I'm an attorney out of Birmingham, Michigan, and represent the applicant. Fairwood Capital is the proposed buyer. The transaction is not closed. It's a hotel of ownership, private equity firm out of Memphis, Tennessee. Very experienced in the ownership and operation of luxury hotels, full-service hotels, and they'll be great stewards of this, uh, this property. There will be some changes in management, but the overall hotel will continue to operate as it has for many years. No physical changes, no name changes. They love what's going on now and they'll plan to continue that for many years to come. So the application's pending. This is part of the due diligence regulatory processes. So this application, the Michigan Liquor Control Commission application and a few others. If we can get all that sorted out, we'll see if this will close. But going through the process and happy to answer any questions you or the public has on May 9th.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Just a quick question. The website for, um, the purchaser doesn't have a lot of information on it. Have they had experience with other hotels of this sort where they've gone in and taken over or, and, and do you have any that you could share with us?
Sure, they have, mostly in the southeast. But I can certainly, through the chief, I'll get a list of other hotels that they own and give you some color on their background. Happy to do that.
Thank you very much.
That'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Things keep changing in our city, right? Next, we have a request to replace sanitary sewer taps on Fourth Street. Patrick, welcome tonight.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure, folks. As part of the Fourth Street complete road project, we've replaced the water, the sewer, the streets, sanitary. Because of what happened last year in the previous runways, we decided to get a whole head of the game and actually had all of the sanitary sewers in that project area videotaped. From them, we found nine suspect or questionable sewer leads. Now that's actually the lead from the house tapped into the sewer main. Those are normally 100% the responsibility of the homeowner. If your sewer goes out or comes off or is blocked, you're normally required to repair it. These are not sewers that have completely failed but are in the process of failing. So in our review, we found that it was probably under our best interest to have the city replace it before we redo the road. The costs for the individual sewers are $2,745. Now for a total for the nine of $27,000, let me get to the end of that, $27, $24,750. It's a, it's a good investment for the city. We've done it previously on Pine and Ludlow, or else you end up with five or six years past and the road starts caving and our good new road has been destroyed. So I have a seal putros here from AEW. If there's any particular specific questions about the sewer lines or policy, I asked the city council for the right to amend the contract using regular dollars, not DWSRA for these repairs.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll make a motion to waive the competitive bidding process and authorize deponio construction to replace the nine defective sewer leads on Fourth Street.
Support.
Support by- Motion by councilmember Sage, support by councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Harrison.
I just have a question. Are these businesses or private homes?
Uh, these are mostly, if not all, homes, private homes.
Okay.
And these not, are not amendments. We would charge if somebody wanted to upgrade like a water main tap or something, that would, they would charge. This is actually necessary for the home to exist.
Pretty good. Madam clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you both for coming. Uh, next is receiver report from the various boards and commissions, planning commission. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the items, we, um, we discussed the adoption of the master plan or the, the transfer of the master plan to council for consideration. So obviously that went out and came to us for our deliberation. There were two public hearings. One had to be moved to the next planning commission meeting on the 21st and that one involves the Pfizer Building to install a new water for injection still at the Parkdale location. So we'll hear more about that. I think part of it was just a noticing issue. We just didn't notice in time to have the public hearing. So that's been corrected. Um, there was a public hearing on the Forest Ridge Apartments with regard to installing carports and the plan looks pretty good. There was definitely a lot of support from the residents and even the neighbors supported it. So we've moved that to the 21st as well for a vote on that, to, to approve that. And then lastly, Vidia offered something that I think we should take her up on that. She's willing to come to both the planning commission and to council and give us a presentation on zoning, planning, and the master plan, on how they all tie together.
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. We will coordinate with her and we will set that up.
Right. And that was kind of in conjunction with what's going on with the schools. And we thought before that all gets to the planning commission and to us, we all wanted to have a very good understanding of what our roles are and what the rules are and stuff before we, um, again, just, so, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Yep. So I'll, happy to work with Vidia on planning, I guess doing a scheduling, I should say, instead of planning, a joint meeting between the planning commission and city council. Just to, I think there would be a benefit from having both bodies together in a, in a joint form. And deputy city manager, Vanda, I just want to confirm, I think the, it was more of a discussion and not the actual public hearing for the carport one?
Correct.
Because that also was the notice issue that was going to get moved on. I just, for the record, just wanted-
We, because we had further, I don't know, we had further discussion on it though.
There was discussion, yes.
The last planning commission. But we're going to have the vote on the 21st in the public hearing. Madam clerk, the, no, we don't need that.
Just on to the next one.
Thank you. Yeah, let's vote on it.
Sure.
Uh, next is a report from the principal shopping district, councilmember Gould.
Yeah, uh, thank you. I have a couple of items. So we met on April 6th. You have some of the things we discussed in there, the sidewalk sales, uh, which are coming back July 14th and 15th. I didn't know, I learned they were 60 years in the running, which I was pretty surprised to hear. Impressive. We also are going to have Dancing in the Street events back on the Friday of the sidewalk sales.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, Farmer's Market will be back on May 7th, which is Saturday. There is a new meat vendor, Freeman Meat Company. Uh, there's also a guy bringing a smoker, I've learned.
Oh.
So that'll, that'll be different. Uh, there are 500 tote bags to be given away and other promotional materials and bike helmets. And there will be a singer there. Deck art is back May 12th and 13th from 5:00 to 9:00. Registration ends April 8th. Businesses, a lot of businesses anyways, will be open until 9:00. Uh, I, I, this is kind of cool. I didn't know this. There's a golden skateboard hidden for, if you find it, 75 bucks. And there's a Kid Crafts and, uh, and at the, at the downtown collaboration studio as well. Uh, the other two things I wanted to mention, first is the Thursday markets, which will be starting soon. We don't know when yet. There's more information. Will be moved to East Fourth Street. I'm assuming because of the construction.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention was, it was a rough meeting. I wasn't thrilled with what I saw as a lack of decorum and professionalism at the meeting. And I don't know if it's, I, I, I'm from the university side of the world and we are inundated with training on how to act, how to behave professionally, how to not yell and shout and bully and try to intimidate. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that the city could somehow authorize, just looking forward, you know, trying to be as prospective as possible, several, some level of training for our appointed, you know, colleagues that volunteer their time for the city. So it's just something to consider. I'm not necessarily making an official motion, but, um, I sure noticed it. I think some of the other folks that were there did. It was, it was pretty rough to, to see the reaction of some of the participants in the meeting and, um, yeah, so I thought I would mention that.
Thank you. So question, councilmember Gould. We have an ethics code, so would it be, is this something that rises to that level?
I would have to look into this ethics code.
Councilmember Harrison.
I'd just like to add that I'm supportive of councilmember Gould suggested, suggestion to look into some sort of civility training. I mean, every business does that, so why, why not us for employees and elected officials and appointed officials and volunteers, the same.
Very good. And I just, I would just like to add, I talked to councilmember Gould and I talked to some other people who are at the meeting. And I just wanted to say that the, the chairman's behavior was completely unprofessional and completely inappropriate. And, um, that's all I have to say on that. Okay, on to budget and finance committee. Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I'm going to take this with councilmember Salvia tonight as well. Uh, councilmember Albrecht and Salvia and I all met last Friday with our administration team. Just a couple of reminders that I'm going to share that we, does everyone have their budget binder now? Because if you don't, I believe Anthony was bringing them tonight, or are they still at the police station?
Yeah, we were all gone. They walked.
Awesome. So everyone has their budget binder. Um, so if there's any questions on the in-between now and, uh, we're looking to set the public hearing for April 25th, that is the public hearing, and then potentially adopting this budget on May 9th. So between that public hearing, um, if there's any questions from council, please reach out. Any of the, the budget committees willing to chat with you or obviously Anthony or Marcy or Blaine can do a one-on-one. So please let us know if you have any questions. Um, and just a reminder too, that that proposed budget, it is providing us a surplus and for future years, we're striving for a balanced budget. And they are, just as a reminder, forecast purposes only, so they are subject to change. I believe councilmember Salvia has additional items to cover.
Sure.
Your pro tem?
Yes, thank you. Um, so one of the items we discussed, this is the time of year when the Great Lakes Water Authority, GLWA, passes along the new rate. So this affects our eastside water customers. So we received a letter stating a 2% rate increase for Great Lakes Water Authority customers. However, the major issue is that there is a large legal battle brewing for over 10 years and it seems as though it's starting to come to a head in our region that could impact our rates positively. For the past 10 years, other GLWA customers have been paying for the city of Highland Park water since they are not paying. So eastside customers, we purchase our water contractually through Shelby Township. Shelby Township has passed a resolution stating their dissatisfaction with Great Lakes Water Authority. They are considering a resolution that would put the rate increase that is caused by the Highland Park not payment into escrow. They have not taken that step, but they are considering it. Other municipalities in Macomb County have done so. My understanding is Oakland County is considering this, watching it. There is a Wayne County coalition that they are in the same position. So this is an issue that is brewing legally and right now, the city of Rochester is, in my opinion, in a good position because we have Shelby taking the front position and, and really supporting us and hopefully getting our rates back in line that have been, we've been paying for Highland Park for 10 years.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia. Um, yeah, I, I guess we're looking for the state to step in and make some kind of judgment with regard to the Hazel Park issue. Um, I also-
Highland Park.
Highland Park, right. Hazel Park. I don't know. Thinking lines. Um, uh, also wanted to thank Anthony and Marcy for the updated interactive model. Very heartened to see, uh, position has improved for out years, even though it's a forecast.
We told you that, Steve.
I was very excited.
Anything further? Councilmember Peterson.
No, just regarding the Highland Park. So what I guess, the state does need to step in and the municipalities need to do that because this is the second time we're having to pick up the tab. And we shouldn't have to-
No, just regarding the Highland Park, so what I guess, the state does need to step in, and the municipalities need to do that because this is the second time we're having to pick up the tab, and we shouldn't have to. Last time, they didn't pay it either, so now this is a new one that they haven't paid, and it's just, it's not right. If I don't pay my water bill, you guys will turn it off, so I don't know how you can get away without paying water bills. I mean, I guess that's the bigger question that needs to be asked, and one we should have brought up to the county to have them reach out to the state regarding that because it's wrong that we have to...
Right. I have spoken with Adam Kokendorfer, and he has replied and also forwarded to Jim Nash, the water commissioner. So they are on it.
Great.
The other thing I would, wanted to add about the budget is, you know, one of the reasons why our budget is looking better is because property tax revenues have gone up due to the inflation forecast. So, you know, it's capped due to Headley at 5%, but in the past, we were forecasting 3.3, and now we're at 5. So it's good news from a city budget standpoint, bad news for all of us paying our property taxes.
That's always the case, isn't it?
Yep. Thank you.
And I'd just like to thank Anthony and Marcy and the team for getting those books together. That's always, and the city manager and his team, it's always a major project every year, so we thank you. And I really enjoyed the budget from the 1962, '63. That was fantastic. Budget of about $450,000.
Mayor, weren't you on council back then?
Oh.
And you got two days tonight.
I have no response to that.
Two days.
Yeah. I so wanted to respond to the county's person on that mayor's name, but I kept my tone. Again, thank you to the Budget and Finance Committee. Next, on to new business referral miscellaneous, public comment, Brian, anything?
I'm not seeing any public comment.
Okay. Received the check register report and the city manager update, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll do both. Check register report, there's only the one, which was the March 31st, and the manager's update, two items. Our Public Works has experienced part of the shortages, some delivery issues in regards to our topsoil and some of the composts. So as soon as we have those items for our community garden opening, we need to have the soil and the compost before we can actually do an opening. So as soon as that delivery happens, we'll let council know. So most likely, there'll be a new date for a grand opening. Again, we need to have the soil and the compost before we can do the grand opening. Next, happy to, and Stephen, I don't want to steal all, you know, all your thunder, so I know you're probably going to jump into this, but the bridge, the initial grant that we applied for, the $25,000 from the Oakland County Parks and Recreation, was awarded to the City of Rochester for that $25,000 for the Pink Creek Trailway Bridge 31-7. This is the design for that engineering component, so this is the initial step. Again, we're estimating that to be over $1 million, and we've applied for several other grants, as well as the overall cost of it as well, and we've been working with the Pink Creek Trail Commission and their staff as well. So this is just one of the, I guess, initial steps. First was actually getting proposals from our engineers, and this is the first part, is actually getting that engineering work done, now getting it paid by through the county. Again, their Parks and Recreation Commission did approve that, so city's achieved another grant, check that off the box.
Good.
Great.
Anything else for the city manager? City Manager, I have a question. As I've talked to a few council members, there's some concern on Griggs Street about the...
Allabilities.
The Allabilities Park. So I guess the question I have is, what is the procedure? Does it have to go through Planning Commission? I don't think it does.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's in the parks, what we would normally do, so, you know, I don't anticipate, I guess, any shovels in the ground probably until this fall. What we've done in the past is to have a community meeting, so the residents in that area, but if you have particular individuals, you know, refer them to myself, Public Works, I think Finance, Marcy, and Anthony, again, on the finance side of things. But typically, in the past, we've had a public meeting to kind of show the engineering plans, show what the equipment would look like, show where the parking and where emergency vehicles would get in and go through all that, and then address the issues prior to the construction.
Very good. So I think we definitely need to have one of those.
Mr. Treacher? Just adding for the part in the park, so since we got the full funding approval, we're now submitted and allowed to start getting the draft and the plans and the renders and all that drawn up. So that's been requested, and as soon as those plans are ready to go, we're going to have a public, well, we're going to have a meeting with all the residents that are there. I've met with a few residents already, both last year as part of the initial application, and then since the, since Slotkin's message and the city's message went out about the grant getting funded, a couple of them were the same ones from last year, like, hey, what's going on? What's this park thing? The one, same thing we talked last year, just now we have funding for it. Okay, okay, cool. So we're going to meet with the residents in the area. It will have to go to Planning Commission as well for approval, and then once that is done, then it'll go to city council for approval as well.
So it does have to go to Planning Commission?
Yeah, I don't see a way that, yeah, because we're changing the outside of the layout and the structure, so...
Nick says no.
Nick says no.
Yeah, I was going to say...
The structure? Oh, so we can remove that?
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think it's, it's not, I mean, they could take it there for informational purposes, but there's not a requirement.
Okay, okay, okay. If that was the result, that's great, because I know when we had talked before, we were going to have the public, so it would just be then to council, but we are going to have, Nick's going to be with us on it, we're going to meet with all the residents in the area and the vicinity there that's going to be affected, probably the same, you know, 500 or whatever it is of all of all those residents to make sure we talk to them specifically, but I have nothing if you are ready.
Would you like their email?
Okay. Sure, yes.
There are a lot of questions, and I think that...
Yeah, we should answer them.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we have...
Give you a head start anyhow.
Thank you.
And Nick, that can be your last official function is attending a...
Thank you, council. And typically, what we've done is also put a sign up, have a website or QR code so people can get other information, so they actually know where it's at. I mean, I know when we've talked with the reporter, you know, just to kind of say, here's the map, here's what the preliminary plans are, you know, but definitely want to address any residents' concerns.
Great. Mr. Assistant City Manager, you have anything to add tonight?
I'll say thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I have two things, Your Honor. Memorial Day update, I still am struggling getting a musical group. I did reach out to OPC, heard back from the lady there. She said she'd forward the information. I haven't heard back from the group yet. I was able to track down the group that Councilmember Peterson suggested. They're now called the Gar, the Guardians of Harmony. I sent them a message. I have not heard back from them yet either. Lieutenant Harper did recommend that we, there is a bugle that plays a recording of taps, so as part of the equipment for the honor guard, they're going to purchase that and have that on standby.
Oh, good.
So we will at least have that along with your student who's going to sing the National Anthem, so, but I will continue up until the last minute trying to find a band or some singers, whatever. Also, I still need some help with the unknown soldier boot, so I'm looking for that. And a second item, boards and commissions applications, I'm ready to send them out to council. I usually, and I will probably tomorrow, send them out electronically. Does anyone want actual paper copies to pick up or have delivered to your house?
No.
Nope, we're all good? Okay, all right, so look for those tomorrow.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yeah, I wanted to tell everybody I had a real fine time on my vacation in Europe, and I missed you all. I'm sorry I wasn't here for the big vote, but I was hoping, I would like to request an excused absence for that meeting.
Motion to give Councilmember Gould an excused absence for the last city council meeting.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes. Thank you. May I report to him, Salvia?
Yes, so this topic I'm going to put in the category of rumor control. So rumor control. I'm sure many of us have heard from residents now that the bids have been received by Rochester School Administration regarding the Harrison Building. So, City Attorney, if you could clarify what authority the city does or does not have regarding, and this is hypothetical, if either the Rochester School, as the owner of the building, or a third-party entity who has purchased the building, if they wanted to demolish the building, what authority does the city have or not have regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So if the, there's really two paths. One is if a private, so say this, say I went through and someone wanted to raise the building, demolish it, there's procedures and our ordinance, but there's a permit that needs to be pulled, but it's not something that the city says yes or no to, as long as they meet the, you know, make sure that they notify people around that when it's going to be happening, kind of do a little site plan of, you know, where the structures are, and just, it's really not, it's an involved process. The, in fact, I think it's the building official that is the one who actually issues it. It's not something that is approved, other than, you know, if they meet these, conceptually, like, the city wouldn't have the ability to deny their demolition request. They have checkboxes, but that's, yes or no is not a discretionary thing. Now, if the, if the school district decides to demolish it, since it's a school building, we did check with our building official to confirm that this, that the, it's actually the state building code because it's a school, that they would be the one in charge of actual controlling of the demolition. So again, that would be even further away from the city's ability to yes or no.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I have nothing else.
I'd just like to say I had a contact with the schools recently, and they said it's going to take six to eight weeks for them to go through, so it's not imminent. That's what they're saying. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to mention, I guess we're, we'll be discussing to accept the budget in the next meeting and then put it up for first reading and adoption. I had mentioned at council meeting, a couple council meetings ago, that I'd like consideration to increase the historical commission budget by $500. I guess would that be appropriate at that meeting then to incorporate that request?
I took your request, and actually, it's already in the proposed budget.
Thank you, sir.
All budget asks are.
Yeah. Outstanding. Also, we talked about when we started the budget discussion, about revising the scorecards for both the fire department and the police department. Have we attempted anything yet?
Is that in process?
I think it's in process. I can check on the, check on the status, but, yeah.
Okay. Good processing, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you.
Whatever that means.
It's perfect. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Friday night, I, and I'm sure some other people up here, went to the firehouse for the Ukrainian humanitarian relief effort, and they had a pragi dinner, being Polish. I enjoyed my pragi and kielbasa. And then Sunday, I went to the raya pancake breakfast. I don't want to give you all my culinary advice, but I, what I wanted to do is, at all those events, you see both chiefs working, cooking, serving people. You see our Finance Director, Maggio, well, he kicked me out of the kitchen at one point, but also working hard, and the fire personnel there, they moved the trucks and all the things, all the equipment out, they set up tables, they're there for the, before, during, and after for the breakdown, and they just do a wonderful job. And I just want to thank both chiefs and their staffs for what they've done, and Finance Director, Maggio. Both events were spectacular. The Friday night event, there was a line getting in of 50 people when I got there at 4 o'clock, and I understand they sold out of all the pragi at some point in time. And then the Sunday raya pancake was, you know, I've done that many times, was very good, so just wanted to give a shout out to them. And then today, I finally used the new parking meters, put my credit card in there, and it took like 10 seconds and everything worked well, so thank you very much. So I'm glad to see the new ones are much, much better, and I'm hoping, and I hope we'll get a report in the next quarter or so, that our parking revenue picks up because all the defective meters are gone and people will truly be paying for the parking spaces they're in, so that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. I think we have a parking meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
So we'll find that out. Councilmember Harrison?
Nothing from me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Happy belated birthday, Nick.
Happy birthday, Nick.
No, sir.
Okay. I would like to reiterate what Councilmember Albrecht said. I was at the raya and had, you know, a great turnout. Actually, I had a brief conversation with Anthony about the budget there, so while he was, while he was cooking, while I was not cooking. So that was a great event. Again, the chiefs really do a good job, and the fire department does a good job. And raya, I was talking with Deb Jones. I mean, that, these last couple of years, they really have a big increase in, you know, demand and stuff like that, so it's a really, really good cause. And then I just want to say on Sunday, both my wife was out walking, and then I was down here picking up my book and stuff like that, and I've never seen the park more crowded. People were out enjoying the park. I mean, it was a beautiful day, and it was really nice to see our park system looks really good and things like that. So without further ado, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.